Robin, you ready?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to call the April 22nd, 2024 Peachtree City Planning Commission Meeting to Order. If everyone would please stand and pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone this evening. We do have a fairly full agenda. We do have a public hearing this evening. We haven't had one in a little while, so we have that. I'm gonna go ahead and start off first. Any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No, sir. Hello? Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
But I do think that Laura was saying that we do not have any items for the first May meeting. And so if it is your will, we could cancel that meeting. I see nodding.
Commissioners, is we good with first May?
Yeah, should we make a motion to cancel?
Sure. That would be helpful.
Would you like to go ahead and?
Yeah, move to cancel the first meeting in May for the planning commission?
I second that motion.
Okay. All those in favor of canceling the first May meeting? Just say aye.
Aye.
Okay. First May meeting is canceled.
Great. And that does remind me, or just to inform, I know you all are aware of this, but just to inform the general public, we do have a voting quorum, but every item in order for it to pass must be unanimous. And any item that is not unanimous automatically is denied.
Hey, back to the meeting. Would it have been the sixth or the 13th?
Let's see.
Because then two weeks later is Memorial Day. So is that, how does that work?
It's a good call out.
It would be the 13th.
Probably the next.
The May 13th is the first meeting of May.
So that's why we canceled it.
And then you're right. The memorial, or is that, that is actually Memorial Day.
Uh huh. It is.
Can we maybe move the?
So what, you all have the authority to call a special called session or a special called meeting. So when we get within two weeks of that meeting, we will reach out to you and let you know if anything has come in. And?
Okay.
And so basically, we'd be looking at maybe the 20th.
I was gonna say, can we pull it in?
And so if we have any items that are, we'll use the May 6th as that deadline. And so if anything comes in before then, we will put it, we'll let you know and request that you call a special called meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Good question. Thank you. Any announcements other than that or reports?
Not for this evening.
Okay. Approval of minutes. Commissioners hopefully an opportunity to review the minutes from last meeting. Any questions or comments related to those?
Nope.
Okay. Without any, I'd like to have a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve minutes and a second. All those in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Minutes approved as submitted. Okay, moving right along. Public hearing. So we have a public hearing for the rezoning of One Pascal Road from GI to LUI. I'm gonna go ahead and go over the public hearing procedures for those who aren't familiar and just to refresh everyone else. When a public hearing is opened, members of the planning commission will become hearers. No action on their part is in order until the chairperson declares the hearing complete. The chairperson will allow each side equal opportunity to the floor. Individual members of the public shall be given up to five minutes to state their case. First, city staff will present the request and provide an assessment of compliance with city code. Next, those supporting the issue will be heard, and that includes the applicant. Then, those opposing the issue will be heard. Prior to closing the public hearing input portion of the meeting, city staff and the public will be given the opportunity to ask questions of either or both sides of the issue. When the chairperson is assured that input is complete, the public hearing shall be ended and the planning commission may then debate the issue and render a decision. All speakers from the public are asked to follow these rules. One, come to the microphone and state your name and neighborhood prior to making remarks. Two, keep remarks under five minutes and please do not repeat others' comments. And three, address all comments to the chairperson. Thank you, and I'm gonna turn it over to staff.
Thank you. The applicant is here tonight, so I will give you an overview of the request and then he'll be able to answer specific questions. So the property is shown here on this very colorful map. Just to orient you, there is 74, right running up that way. And then this kind of area right here is Dividend, and you all may be familiar how it deadends into Pascal Road. Pascal Road actually deadends into this large property shown here, highlighted in the blue cyan color. They are requesting to rezone to LUI to allow for the subdivision of this property into two lots. There are two larger buildings on the property, and you can sort of see them here in this hatched area. And then this is the proposed new subdividing line. So staff cannot approve, minor subdivision where no, any, no public infrastructure is added is an administrative review by city staff, planning staff. However, we are not authorized to create lots that are non-conforming to the zoning conditions or the zoning requirements. And the zoning requirements that this lot cannot meet are both the side setback as well as the public road frontage of 200 feet. In fact, the current lot does not meet that 200 foot. And so this applicant met with staff and the city manager to sort of discuss their options and were given two. They could either apply for a variance, but as you know, that requires proof of some type of hardship that they didn't create. Or they can come forward through an LUI rezoning process with a specific plan proposal. So they have chose this option and they're not requesting any changes in the actual land use. They want to be able to maintain all of their GI land uses. And I did wanna remind everybody, 'cause it just occurred to, or what I was reminded of it today, is that the LUI is a site plan specific. So some questions that have come up about if the property is completely redeveloped, what standards would apply? The, the property cannot do that, cannot completely redevelop without coming back through a rezoning process. So I'm here to answer any questions that you have about the process, and then maybe the applicant can come forward and, and answer any questions about some of the vision for the property.
Question the staff, and it's probably good information to kind of refresh. As you said, the LUI is a very site-specific. What type of, I guess would be what type of items, what type of things can go in an LUI?
This is, well, so they have, the LUI is allowed any uses that are both in the GI and the LI zoning district. They have asked for the GI land uses. And so as this progresses, it will have an ordinance that's actually tied to it. And that ordinance will enumerate the specific GI uses that are currently in that ordinance.
Good. Thank you. Okay. Do we have the applicant? Okay. We'll go ahead and start with you. If you please give your name and you live in a specific neighborhood in Peachtree City.
Evening, council. My name is Adam Bakalini at One Pascal Road. I actually live on the border of Peachtree City on Quarters Road, but I'm proud to have my warehouse and business in Peachtree City, again, at One Pascal Road. Company name is Salvage Trading, and my real estate holding company is Azalea Capital.
Okay. Would you like to give any additional information?
Yes. First, I'd like to thank you all for your time. Evening and welcome. The property is actually one of the older industrial sites in Peachtree City. Our main building one was actually built in 1960s. Pascal Road was named after the founder. We're proud of the history. We've actually revamped the cotton gin that was initially put there within the last two years, so again, proud of that. We were able to keep some jobs. Unfortunately, the insurance world isn't too kind to the cotton ag business at this time. And our second building on site is used more for our trade and our 3PL side of business. The hopes of this is to bring things within reason. I know we have an abandoned rail between the two buildings and it's affecting the setback. We have some overhang space, and I think that's just under that 20-foot barrier that you guys typically need. And again, the hopes is to bring back the life and continue to invest in it. Currently redoing the roofs and new concrete, kind of full revamp. Again, the buildings have been neglected unfortunately over the decades, you know, the industry wasn't doing too well. And now with the, I guess, a newer vision with bringing in 3PL, I've been able to get a UN contract that I'm proud of that helps with refugees. We service their, I guess, gift and exchange program such as clothing and shoes. And the hopes is for building two to fully utilize for that. And again, without the setback, insurance is gonna force me to continue to pay tenfold normal, I guess, property insurance for building two, even though it's not necessarily used for cotton. So again, just hoping to have a little bit of reason brought in and use the, the two buildings for their, for their separate purposes and at the same time, I guess, keep the history alive and under one, one banner, which would be my company.
Great. Thank you. Do we have any questions? I'm sorry. Forget it. Anyone else in support of this? Anyone else in support? Okay, you can have a seat.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone in opposition? No, no one else in opposition? Okay. Anyone else that has anything? No? Okay. I'm gonna call the public input complete. And gonna go ahead and open it up now to the commissioners. We're gonna go ahead and do questions first and then comments. Commissioner Chris?
Sure. Just a quick question. With the split of the two properties, will there be, just in case one side gets sold off at, at some point, especially the, the side that, that is not in use for cotton, will there be some sort of easement that allows access to that property? Because it doesn't look like that property has any, any frontage currently.
Yes, sir. The easement would be the road that goes?
I'm so sorry. If you could come to the microphone.
First time here, my apologies. Yes, the easement would include the road that goes in front of the offices. As I told you before, there is a rail that separates the building. There is already a separate fence that splits the buildings as well, so we would just allocate that frontage. If you can see the long drive-in, there's already an easement in place for the Pascal Business Center that was actually sold off previously by the former owners of the property, which allows them access to come in with their vehicles and enter in behind for businesses like Line Creek. So we would just continue that plan and allow for that frontage to be passed by whatever trucks that are already go by it currently.
Okay. Other questions? Gonna go down, Commissioner Reeves. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Sorry I'm late. The only question I had was similar to the question that we just heard a second ago as far as the easement is concerned. I truly understand why it is, you've made the request, you know? In addition, I understand the assessment that the staff has made. But I think my one question would be 15, 70, 100 years from now, if these properties are not owned by the same folks right now, how does it affect new property owners if there was a fire, let's say on the backside of one of those buildings? Is that something that we look at as a staff when we evaluate these type of things and rezoning?
Right. So do keep in mind that these are existing buildings?
Correct.
And so we currently provide fire protection to them?
Okay.
And to help kind of, help you understand the plating process in the state of Georgia, they have to provide, when there's a land, when you create a landlocked lot like this, you must provide access of the landlocked lot to public roads. So they, they will have to do that. And then as far as providing fire service, we, we do that currently.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Commissioner Johnson?
I have no questions at this time.
Commissioner Liotta?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I do have a few questions for you, Adam. Which is building one and two, because they're not labeled? Is building one on lot one, building two on lot two?
Yes. So that, where the red mark is, is building one, and then that would be building two, where the red dot is moved to.
Okay. That, that makes that easy. Thank you.
Sorry for the confusion.
You said that there was an easement currently in place from the end of Dividend, that right angle where the two roads meet into the site, but I don't see that represented on the plat that you're submitting in support of the zone change.
Okay, my apologies. I know I, the form that I initially sent when we purchased the property, if you look in the contract, it was included. I'll be happy for that first about 200 feet, once you enter in that stretch. The Pascal Business Center, I think right there you can see built in a ramp to do that. It was, it was a way to try to appease our neighbors and keep them happy. Again, it's mostly for truck access because that's what comes down our road. It kind of backs in and sneaks behind their property, so it doesn't mess with their frontage. But yeah, I'll be happy to share you the specific details involving that, but again, it is just that front little stretch right there. It doesn't lead all the way to where it actually overlapped with any future easements at that second stage.
Okay. So there's a, an existing easement that accesses the other property that's just in front of lot two?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Robin, I think you mentioned it earlier, but I just wanted clarification. When a landlock, locked lot, like proposed lot one is created, Georgia allows for access through a dedicated easement?
They require it, yes, sir.
Okay. Would that be similar in nature also to, for utilities?
So the, the law, the language in, it's 43-3, doesn't specify utilities, so if that's something that you wanted to add and require, that would be, this would be the appropriate time to do that as a condition of approval?
I'm just thinking, you know, there's, may potentially be separate utilities serving each building, and if they're not in some easement for lot one, they technically can't cross lot two. So maybe that's something that might have to get worked out.
Absolutely.
Are there any other LUI rezonings that don't have lot frontage?
Yes, there are. I don't have a map of those, but the Panasonic campus is divided in half, and the back half of that property is owned by a different branch of the, of their umbrella company. And it does not have any road frontage on 74. The same with the, the Perrigo direct property has no road frontage.
So, so it's safe to say this would not be a unique circumstance?
No, no, sir. This would, this would fit that mold.
One of the conditions that I, that I saw in the general LUI establishment conditions, there, I think there's six of them. And number five talks about development standards, and it says, "In no instance will any site development within the LUI district take place within 300 feet of a residential district." There is residential behind this.
Right.
So that would still apply. All of those?
Yes.
Conditions apply.
So I think that residential starts right here?
Yes.
And so they would not be able to develop within 300 feet here, but fortunately, or unfortunately for them, that's actually environmentally sensitive land, and they're not able to develop it anyway.
Might not matter.
Right.
Okay. Question for you, Adam. What's the reason for the zero setback? Because I'm looking at the map that you presented, and there's 53 plus or minus feet separating the buildings, and I'm wondering why you need a zero setback?
Yes, sir. So I mentioned briefly before, there's overhangs. So both the buildings are built with overhangs, again, for wholesale trade. The rail car used to come in, it was offloaded on rainy days, it needed that coverage. That rail actually builds and kind of tapers back near the end, and the back section is minus the, I believe, the 20 feet that's required. If you count between the actual walls of the building, then it is the 50 feet, but I think the overhang and the support beams fall within that range, so it's not really viewable there.
So, so those overhang structures really aren't shown on this map?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Might be important to have that on the next document.
Duly noted.
Robin, I guess my, the last question, I think you said that any future development, if the rezoning is in place?
Mm-hmm.
It's based on the map that's being proposed for the rezoning?
That's right.
Would any additions require them to come back?
So they would need to be considered significant additions, which, or which our ordinance requires or defines development as anything that's 5,000 square feet or more. So if they were to do a, an addition that was 2,000 square feet, that technically doesn't meet our ordinance definition of development, and so they wouldn't need to revise their plan, but anything over 5,000 square feet, they would.
So they wouldn't be able to come in for a building addition over 2,000 square feet without?
Over, over 5,000.
Over 5,000 without coming back for a zone amendment?
That's right.
Of some kind? So they couldn't get a variance or anything? They'd have to have the zone amended again?
That's right, because it's a site, site plan specific.
Okay.
So variance would not apply in that, in this zoning category.
Okay. And if a building or both buildings lost their utility and were not functional anymore, for example, and they were demolished, what happens with something like that?
The only way that they would be able to get a building permit without coming back through the rezoning process is if they built that new building in the exact same location and configuration.
Okay. Okay. Those are all the questions I have right now, Mr. Chairman, but thank you for the time.
Yes, definitely. Okay. Gonna go ahead and open it up for comments.
No comments.
Commissioner Johnson?
Just wanted to state, I mean, I, I'm in favor of this for a few reasons, just since it won't have any effect on the current comprehensive land use plan. One of the questions I had, but y'all put it in the agenda, was some examples of other properties that have been rezoned for the purpose of subdivision. You provided that, and that the setback variance will be requested, so I feel like they, they are meeting the requirements.
Commissioner Chris?
Yes, I'm also in favor. I think that it's nice to see the reinvestment into the properties that you're doing here. I do, I do like Commissioner Liotta's point about accommodating utilities if and when this were to be sold. You know, I think it would be in their best interest if there was a sale to accommodate the purchaser anyway, but it is something that I'm open to if the rest of the commissioners think that we should make that a condition. I don't know how far we can make that.
You can, you can say approve this with the condition that a utility easement is granted to lot two.
Okay. Great. Yeah, that's what, that would be my suggestion then. But other than that, I'm in favor.
Mr. Chairman? Commissioner Liotta?
Yeah, just to expand on that last suggestion, I think we would wanna see the proposed access and utility easements on the plan that's associated with this lot or this rezoning, so that it, it clearly indicates where the access across lot one can occur for the purposes of utilizing lot two.
And I've gotten that backwards. And I've gotten everybody, lot one is actually?
Oh, I'm sorry, so it's?
No, I did that, too.
It's the opposite. The easements would be across lot two from Dividend to lot one. Okay. I mean, that, that would be my suggestion in a, a recommendation for the zone change. That, that would be a necessity.
And, and my, my comments are the same. It's always good to see, you know, the opportunity for redevelopment, whether to, to keep existing jobs and, and business going or to, to grow, especially in, in difficult times and difficult economies. It's, it's good to see people looking to go ahead and, and do that, so thank you for, for taking the, the time and the money to go ahead and, and make the changes you're looking to do. So any other comments, questions? If that's it, like to have a motion for recommendation. What are your motion?
Move to approve the rezoning of One Pascal Road from GI to LUI with the condition that the applicant provide appropriate easement for utility access to the second lot.
Okay. So we have a recommendation for approval?
And do we wanna say to indicate it on the plan?
Yes, and? Indicate it on the plan.
Utility and access easements.
Utility and, and physical access easements, yeah.
Got it. Second.
Okay, we have second? Any comments or questions on that? Okay. If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Recommendation for approval of the easement with the conditions noted.
Recommended, approval of the rezoning?
Rezoning. Thank you. Forgot that part.
Thank you, council.
Thank you very much.
So the next item is actually an old agenda item. Am I skipping ahead? I'm sorry if I've gotten out in front of you, Mr. Rittenour.
I'm just scribbling. You can go ahead.
Okay. Okay. So this was heard at the last planning commission, and you as a body requested some additional information, both on driveways, rights of way, open space and unit design. The request is for a final plat, so some of those items do pertain to the plating process and some may not, and just wanna make sure everybody understands that some things that we discuss specifically about design may not be required, we may not be able to condition as, as, as a plat approval. So what I've done is I've highlighted those here on this slide, if I can take some time. So this is the revised proposal, and I have tried to align them so that we can flip back and forth, a little mini animation here. But you may see that, we're gonna call this road A, this far left. They've actually moved this a little bit closer, and as a result, been able to make it a 50-foot right of way. And all of the lots, and when I mean lots, I mean the outline of the lot, not the actual unit footprint within that lot. All of those types of items are definitely a part of the plat approval. They've also revised the green, the, I'll call it interior green space, whereas before we had sort of these meandering sidewalks, they have straightened those out a little bit. But really what we are discussing as far as the plating process is the actual lot configuration of that green space. So whereas, you know, whether you have curvy sidewalks or straight sidewalks, that's a design element, that's really not part of the plating process. design element, that's really not part of the plating process. Then the unit detail, they have provided some additional unit detail, they have some detached garages, and then there's the unit. That doesn't really have anything to do with the plat, the lot, think of it as like if you were doing a large creswind subdivision, you don't, we don't really, in the plating process, we don't discuss the home design within that, but we do discuss the layout of the lots, but how it can have an impact is access and circulation. So how do those lots, how are those lots accessed from either the right-of-way, or maybe even the green space? There are fewer parking spaces, but that is a design element and not a plating process. And then there, I did want to notice that the, I noticed that the water area of the stormwater, it is a different configuration, and as a result, they may have gotten thirty-eight lots instead of thirty-seven. But that approval of this configuration does not carry or supersede any kind of engineering review that they're going to have to go through as part of the development. So if in fact this size cannot accommodate the needs of the entire development, they may have to, or will have to, enlarge in it. So the applicant also provided these detail sheets, and I'm going to let them kind of discuss it, but I did want to bring to your attention what you are approving, or, or considering for approval, is the right-of-way width. So road A is fifty feet, and there it is shown here, and then B, C, and D are these alleyway types of rights of way that you would be considering for approval. So if the applicant could please come up and maybe provide some more information, that would be helpful, thank you.
Hello. First of all, is this, is this working?
I can hear you.
Okay. First of all, I'd like to thank you all for your input at our last meeting, it provided, provided an opportunity for us to really dig into this a little deeper, more towards the engineering side of it, so we were able to really get a better understanding of the overall development that we, that we could do. A couple of the things I'd like to point out, the fifty-foot right-of-way road A ultimately will be a city street, and therefore the requirement for the fifty-foot right-of-way. Roads B, C, and D are private roads, and are designed with a thirty-foot right-of-way as well. So if we, Robin, if we could go back to the previous, so you can see, I know earlier, yeah, you got the updated plat to them. Okay. So we were able to extend the driveway to answer your question, Mr. Lauda, and also the sidewalk. I think one of the questions that came up was about the garage design, previously, first of all, they were connected to the living structure. We made a decision to eliminate that connectivity in order to increase the size of the courtyard area between the garage and the actual living space. We just felt like that's really going to be a focal point of these units, and it creates an opportunity for outdoor living in a private scenario. Additionally, the wall, the, the separation between those courtyards, unit to unit, will be a six-foot brick wall. Additionally, previously, the garage units for neighboring units were connected, and we decided to separate those in order to create more of a private walkway from the garage area to the main living structure. So in other words, you're not having a shared walkway to your gate to get into your courtyard, so you have a private walkway next to your, next to your garage. Let's see. Robin, back to the last one. What we have here is an example, on the left, the photo at the, the middle left, that's, it's kind of the idea of the walkways between the buildings, it's more of a linear design than the meandering, um, um, design that we had in the initial conceptual layout. We took a couple of things into consideration there. Number one is the overall space that was available. Generally, well, we're, these units are only going to be two stories, so they're not going to be tall buildings, and we felt like we were able to squeeze that space because height-wise, we're not going to have a, a real tall building, so we'll still gain natural light between them, so we decided to go with that linear sidewalk instead of the meandering type sidewalks. The next photo gives an idea of kind of what those walls will look like between the courtyards. They will be six-foot high as opposed to that with the brick with the wrought iron on top. And then again, the third photo, in the middle there, that's generally the look of the buildings. We will have a pitched roof versus a flat roof, but generally it'll be a two-story design like that. The next photo is actually in North Cove, it's also a narrow ease, or a right-of-way, so that's about a thirty-foot right-of-way. And then the last one is in Everton, I believe, and that is a inverted roadway with the drainage down the middle underground, and what's called the ribbon curb, so it doesn't have the high curb that steps up, it captures water into the middle of the street and captures it, and drains it out that way instead of along the sides of the road. So that's kind of how we were able to work with the, the stormwater planning, although it's conceptual at this point still. If we could go back to the first one, I believe, no, yeah, this one. So here, one of the questions that came up was the thirty-foot wide versus the twenty-foot wide, I just want to make sure that we all understand, the footprint of the units themselves will only be twenty feet, twenty-five feet wide. We asked for that additional five feet on the end units where it will work, in order to either put an awning, or maybe pop out a bay window or something like that to create some texture on the end of those units, so it'll be more attractive and not just a blank wall down the, down the side of the units. So generally, those are the, the changes we made to it, we feel like it, it works well. We did end up with an additional unit based on the thought of the stormwater being smaller, we hope that will work, if not, we'll have to revert back to the thirty-seven. So that's generally an overview of the changes we made. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I appreciate it, and, and I apologize, I, I should have got your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Rock Degoleyn.
Thanks. Just for the record, yes.
Sure.
And, and I do want to say also, I, I, I appreciate the extra work that, that you put in, and, you know, I know we, we went a bit above and beyond what, what the standard five oh one, you know, conceptual plat is. One of the things I, I think we've noticed over, over the time that we've been, is that that extra information sometimes really helps us visualize what, what's going to be happening, not only us on the commission, but also the other residents and, and anyone else who might have some, some questions or comments, I, I think it's always good to have, you know, it can go a little too far beyond sometimes also, but I think what, what we requested and what you provided really gives us a much better sense of what this development is, is going to look like, and knowing that there, there may be changes, and probably will be some changes going forward, but it definitely gives us a better visualization of, of what you're proposing, so definitely appreciate that, thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and open it up for, for questions first, and then comments. Commissioner Lauda?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's Mr. Degoleyn, is that how you pronounce?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Thank you. In, in terms of looking at this new design, and by the way, I do like this, I like the change that you made, it's very interesting, and I have a few questions about the design as it relates to both vehicle and pedestrian visitor delivery type access for those interior walkways and the, the units themselves. Could you just run through how people would access these units if you were, say, a visitor?
Sure. First of all, we do have four parking spaces per unit, two in the garage and two in the driveway, that would not protrude into the roadway. So you have the ability for up to four cars at each home. Additionally, we ended up with, I think it was twenty-nine parking spaces between, yeah, twenty-seven, I'm sorry, with the, where the mailbox space is. So those are designed for visitors, if someone's having a function, there's obviously some overflow parking there. Normally, those folks would get out of their car and walk through the pathways in the middle of the units, and access the front door. There's another, another way, as far as delivery, you've talked about delivery, the concept there is, you know, those vans are going to be driving around the entire neighborhood, they could either stop at a parking spot and go to the front, or more likely, we'd set up some kind of a drop-off procedure for the delivery vans, most likely in the rear, where they could either have a drop box next to the gate or something like that. That's something we'd have to think through.
So then, in, in terms of the unit, the way it's, each one is working?
Yes, sir.
For example, units one through four, which are the upper left?
Yes, sir.
Be nice if they were numbered on this graphic, it's a nice-looking graphic, but it's hard to describe which unit is where, but, so if you were going to access the front door, you would come down that sidewalk area between?
Uh, yes, between.
Units one and five, is that right?
Yeah, they're right there, correct.
Yeah.
So you park in the, in the overflow parking?
Right.
And then you can walk across and up to those first four units.
Okay, okay.
That's generally the, the concept.
So then, the question I really have, and, and it has to do with the circulation and the pedestrian access to the units, how do units thirty-two through thirty-eight work? You're not showing a similar type of pedestrian access to the front door.
Well, there's several ways we could approach that. First would be, if, assuming we were able to keep those as they are, would be to have a stepstone path around the corners at each, at each end to allow access to the front for folks that would be coming to those units on the front side.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. Can you point to exactly where we're talking about on the map?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So you'd have, like, a sidewalk here, is that what you're saying?
Ideally, either a sidewalk or a stepstone path, or something like that. The other, the other concept, and this really is more for, again, for engineering, would be, really, the, the challenge there is at the very corner where you had mentioned about the landscape buffer. If we got into a scenario where we were able to keep that number of units, then we'd have to consider potentially shortening the courtyard to allow an additional five feet, and potentially shortening the, the space and the living space itself as well, that, that would become an option.
So if I'm clear, making this courtyard a little bit shallower?
Yes, on the, on the end units.
Okay.
So we could step that back. Because right now, if you look at the next graphic where we had all the detail, on the bottom left here, you see you have twenty-five foot wide and fifty feet long in the, in the living space, and then you've got a twenty-foot courtyard, enclosed courtyard area. So that gives us some flexibility there to shrink that down if, if need be. And then you've got the twenty-foot garage, and I think we've got twenty, well, a total of twenty feet of driveway into the, which gets into the right-of-way to the, to the road.
I, I guess, I'm asking questions about that access because it, it looks to me that if you're going to provide a similar type of pedestrian access around building units thirty-two to thirty-eight, which is the building all the way on the right.
Yes, sir.
You're going to have to maybe move some things around because you'll be on both the north and the south sides, encroaching significantly into the landscape buffers with the current unit layout.
Yes, on the bottom, on the bottom, we would get into the landscape buffer, it looks like, yes, so.
As well as the upper right-hand corner.
If, but if we short, if we bring the, if we shrink down the courtyard itself on the upper one, then that would allow us space to bring that sidewalk around that corner. The other, at the bottom, is that a thirty-foot unit that long shows? Yeah, so that, that, each of those units actually is thirty feet wide in this diagram, so that's, they would actually be a little bit narrower than what's shown, so that would also allow more space.
Mr. Chairman, that, those are really the questions I have about the layout, really, to me, buildings thirty-eight through thirty-two are not functioning without this walkway around them the same way all the other units are functioning from an access standpoint, and that's some, a little concerning to me, but I think it's something that probably can be adjusted.
Commissioner Chris?
Yep. I would imagine that the applicant doesn't have any objection to the staff condition that that path, the sidewalk closest to that court there be used as a cart path?
I, yes, I believe we discussed that the last, so, yeah, we decided to widen that enough.
Great. And I, you know, I, just as a comment, I had the same concern about the, the pedestrian access to the front of the buildings on the, on the right-hand side. Would you be opposed to eliminating one of the units in order to have enough access on that side for a proper walk, walkway at the front, and the front of the units, and then also on the top of the bottom, to get to the?
Well, I think what you can do, because math is math.
Yeah.
So without specifying the laws of a unit, what you can say is you can require a minimum pavement width of, say, five feet, that's an ADA that allows somebody to pass by, and then they can do the math, and however the chips fall is, is the result.
How, how wide are the current proposed paths in between those other units of?
I think they're ten feet.
They're ten feet wide, so this would be, yeah, we, we'd have to decide, I guess, what kind of, how, how, why we would want those paths. I mean, I think consistency would be ideal from a, but, you know, we can, we can talk about that.
Well, I, this, I'm, I'm certainly willing to make the commitment that we will get a path into the front of the, front of those building, that building. I, I don't necessarily want to give up a unit at this point if I don't have to, if engineering requires that we do give it up, I'd certainly be willing to do that.
Sure. Quick, quick question to staff, if, just curious, if they, if they do put a path in front and then along that bottom side there, are they allowed to go into the easement with the path, a walking path?
What type of easement?
So, well, or the, or the buffer, I'm sorry, the buffer, that, that butts the bottom of the, of the, of the tract there?
Yes, so those buffers are not mandated by the ordinance, and so that is their design.
I mean, I, I, I would want that walking path, if I was going to live there, not to be within the buffer, because then we'd still have a, a landscape buffer, that would just be my personal preference. Maybe we would state that as a condition as well, that the path, if there is one at the bottom, doesn't take away from the, the likely landscape buffer, buffer that would be there otherwise. Yeah, that's all the questions.
Okay. Mr. Johnson?
Um, this was kind of one of my questions anyway, but it was, it was sort of addressed in here, and then just in response to the number of units, just, I don't know if I want to call it a reminder, but that the original was one less unit anyway, so I just wanted to kind of throw that out there, so, and I, I really don't have any other actual questions.
Commissioner Reeves?
Yes, I do have a question, and maybe it's already been asked and answered, and I was just looking for something else, but if we go to the next slide, if you don't mind. Okay, so if we look at the very bottom left, right, and we look at the actual residential unit and the yard and the garage, I'm trying to make sure I understand what's actually happening here. If I have two of my vehicles parked in the garage, and I have a guest that parks behind my garage, how do they get to the front door? Do they walk on the grass to the left, come through the backyard there, or do they have to, how do they get to the front door?
So if, if they're a guest and you know they're coming, most likely they would go to the back gate at the courtyard.
Okay, and where's the gate?
It's.
Right there?
Right about here.
Okay. Okay, and the last question I had, just for clarification. Okay, and the last question I had, just for clarification, to make sure I'm tracking. On that same diagram, picture number three, that walkway right there?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, where is that walkway in relationship to the first map?
That would be the center walkway that is-
In between the units?
Between the buildings, that's correct.
Okay.
And that's an example of the linear, being a linear straight walkway as well as landscaping around it, to give an idea of the overall goal that we hope to achieve.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Sure.
Good, and the questions I had have already been asked. I'm gonna go ahead and open it up then for comments. Commissioner Johnson?
So I think that with the recommendations that we came up with, you know, I think that we can, you know, I feel good about moving forward with the project.
Thank you.
Commissioner Reeves?
I basically did owe that comment. I think that with the recommendations made, those units, what are they? Thirty-two through thirty-eight? Could be adjusted if possible, you know. I find it kinda interesting to actually be someone that might be looking for a home, a townhouse?
Okay.
You know, to actually have my front door looking at the stormwater, you know. But I do understand the limitations of what you have. But I think with those adjustments, it could be, it could work.
Okay.
And if I can add, just to be clear on the things I think that we recommended, so to show the number of, like, number the units?
Right, right.
Um, come up with a plan for deliveries, like, how will those happen? And then how to access units thirty-two, the front of units thirty-two through thirty-eight. I believe I covered everything.
Commissioner Chris?
Yep, I mean, I agree with the comments that have been said so far. I think that if we attach the three conditions, right? So we're talking about adding the walkway for those buildings thirty-two through thirty-eight, not only in front, but also on the south and the north side. I would also, again, say that the walkways that are added should not be within any landscape buffers or the buffer between the other property lines. And, you know, I'm open to discussion on how strict we wanna be with a walkway proposal. I love the ten-foot walkways between the buildings. I think those are really nice. Does it need to be ten-foot over by the stormwater pond? I'm not sure. I think five feet's probably okay. But, and then also the staff condition as well would be the third piece. So those three things is, if I was gonna make a motion, that's what I would say.
And before we, I guess, go to Commissioner Liotta. For staff, standard sidewalk width?
I mean, ADA, well, actually, the standard minimum is four feet.
Okay.
But you have to have five feet every certain amount of distance. And so honestly, for simplicity-
Five feet?
I consider five feet to be a minimum.
That's what I wanted to make sure. Okay. Commissioner Liotta?
I concur with Mr. Chris's comments about the access around those easternmost units, thirty-two through thirty-eight, and I completely agree that our recommendation on this should be to provide the five-foot minimum sidewalk access around them, and not have that access impinge on the ten-foot landscape strip or the twenty-foot landscape strip on the north and the south sides. And the adjustment to the plan would need to happen to accommodate that.
Thank you. And I have to agree, I think there needs to be just a little bit more work for those units thirty-two through thirty-eight with the way they're set up, to go ahead and add that. And if we're looking at, you know, standard, you know, we would be looking at a minimum five-foot path, walkway, that we'd be going through that area. Do have to agree that we wanna try to keep that out of the landscape buffer. Being able to move some things around as you go forward, I think is important. And then again, you know, with the staff condition going in. So again, do appreciate, you know, the extra work. I think there's, just that grouping of homes really on that, on that side. You just need to sharpen the pencil a little bit more and figure out how that could be accomplished.
Understand.
And I'm sure there's a solution to it, no doubt, to be able to do that. Anything else?
Could I ask Mr. DeGolli one more question?
Sure can.
Is there anything like this already in Peachtree City or within a close proximity?
Not quite like this. There's, there are townhome developments, certainly in Lexington. There's existing townhomes that have been there for probably fifteen years now. And on MacDuff Parkway in Everton, there are townhomes there. There's nothing quite like this design, however. So I feel like this is gonna be a unique product for this market.
Thank you.
And I do have to say, one of the things you happened to bring up, North Cove, that was one of the initial, you know, thoughts is that it's similar, but not quite.
Right.
It takes pieces of that, and of course, then differences, most definitely. But there's some similarity just in the way you foresee this, you know, kinda coming out. That's what I was thinking, so, thanks.
I have one last thing, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Just looking at it, back to my original comment, around the stormwater, I see you have some shrubs or something around the outer edge. And maybe I'm out of line here, you'll have to tell me. But is it possible to put some shrubbery on the side of the stormwater that actually faces the units?
It's certainly possible. It's a, we don't wanna impend on any flow into it. There will be a fence required around that, so we're gonna wanna shield that fence to some degree.
Thank you.
And it may be, it may be that market demands that the, that stormwater pond be treated more like an amenity and not like a utility?
Right. Well, we wanna make it attractive, certainly.
I mean, if your front door is looking into that, I would imagine your prospective buyers will be interested in that.
Yeah, we're gonna have to make it look good.
Mr. Chairman, I- That just brings up one other question I meant to ask. What's the target market for these units?
Well, honestly, it's for people that are downsizing. As we all know, there's a lot of, people are not selling their homes right now because their interest rates are so low. So what we're trying to do is create a scenario where people are willing to sell their homes and be able to pay cash for these if they're moving out of Smoke Rise or Stony Brook or one of those type neighborhoods. It's also designed for people that are, that are moving here. There's just so much activity that's happening in Fayette County as far as, of course, the trillith studios and the soccer complex, and then a little bit will revolve around the data center. There's just a lot of activity happening in this area, and we feel like a lot of those folks.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I was amazed how time can change. If you remember the Aberdeen Mixed Use Project, and when they came before this board, they had mentioned the five to six hundred range, and they are now listed at nine fifty.
Okay, any other comments or questions? No? Okay. So, can we get a motion? Who would like to put this one together?
I'll try my best.
Okay.
I move to approve the conceptual plat for Peachtree Court Townhomes at 135 Peachtree Court with the following conditions. The staff condition as specified in the agenda packet concerning the sidewalk along Peachtree Court be using, be, being used as a multi-use path. Also with the condition that the easternmost buildings, thirty-two through thirty-eight, be provided with a walking path of at least five feet in width, and that that walking path not impinge upon any landscape buffers around the entirety of the property. I think that's it.
Okay, so we have a motion for approval of the conceptual plat with the conditions of the staff for the multi-use, and for the walking path around buildings thirty-two through thirty-eight, minimum five feet, and not impinging within the landscape buffers. Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Any questions or comments?
We may wanna specify, actually, that the walking path go from the north part of that road, was at C, all the way around to the south part of-
Right.
So basically surrounds-
Surrounds those units, correct.
Surrounds those units, okay.
Dual access to that road.
Okay. Any comments or questions on the motion for approval with conditions?
Is there a second?
There's a second, a second.
Okay, second, good. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Okay. Motion passed for approval of the conceptual plat with conditions.
Thank you very much, I appreciate you all.
Switching gears to new agenda items. Landscape plan for the Moon Valley Nursery, fourteen oh one Moba Drive.
Alrighty. All right, so you're all probably familiar with this property. It is in the Moba Development on Highway seventy-four south. The address is fourteen oh one Moba Drive, located in the yellow box there. The site is approximately three acres. Let's change slides here. Approximately three acres, the impervious surface area, which includes the proposed building, driveways, parking area, and any sidewalks and patio area. The total is thirty-two thousand seven hundred and forty-eight square feet. Based on that impervious area, the caliber inches required are ninety-eight inches of canopy trees and sixty-five inches of understory trees. The applicant is not requesting to use an alternative compliance method, and the proposed plan does meet the requirements, the required number of caliber inches. The plan provides a total of sixty-six inches of understory trees and a hundred and two inches of canopy trees. There are three varieties of hardwoods. We have the red maples, let's see, shown here, red maples, willow oaks, lace bark elms. We have two varieties of evergreens, shown here, cryptomirias, bald cypress, and one flowering tree, these eastern red buds. And they are mixed throughout the perimeter of the property. Remember now, this is a nursery, and this product yard will be also filled with plant material. So we'll have quite a green site here. In addition, a large portion of this, of the sixty-foot landscape buffer is taken up with the Georgia Power easement, fifty percent or more of the landscape buffer. However, the remainder of, the remainder of the buffer is being replanted with a mix of hardwoods and evergreens and a couple of flowering trees down here. So the, down here in the buffer, we do have the oak, we have some of the oaks, we've got the red maples, a few evergreens dotted in, one elm, and like I said, a couple of the, couple of the red buds dotted in. So really, that's about it. So we, staff does feel that the landscape plan meets the requirements of the ordinances and recommends approval.
Thank you, Laura. And I wanna commend your color coding.
Yes.
It's, it's actually very nice and wonderful.
Makes it very easy to understand, doesn't it?
Yes, it does. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Is the applicant?
Yes, sir, Jason Wallace with Highland Land Planning here, representing South Tree Development, the owner of the property. Our tenant will be Moon Valley Nurseries, and they'll sell the large diameter trees, you know, trees larger than you can get at local nurseries or from local landscapers. So just here to answer any questions you have, and we will probably start to hire Laura to dress these up for us and other communities as well.
I'm gonna go ahead and start. Commissioner Johnson, any, any questions of the applicant or staff?
So just one question. The flowering tree, the red bud, is there a reason why it's on three sides but not on the fourth side, the flowering tree?
I don't believe so. I think we could possibly move some around if you'd like.
Okay, just, just curious about that. That was really my only question.
Commissioner Reeves? I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna point out that even on that side, we're coming in ten to twelve feet above the lots. The lots drop down in a hole.
Okay.
I think the intent there, and I think what this might be missing is there's some existing street trees.
When this industrial site was developed, they put oak trees all along the right-of-way, kind of evenly spaced. And so there are, in that right-of-way and not shown on this plan, every thirty feet are oaks.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Reeves?
The colors that you put on the diagram are very helpful, very helpful. It looks like a very inviting place. And I have no other comments.
Commissioner Chris?
No comments or questions.
Commissioner Liotta?
The only comment I have is that, and it was just mentioned that the site's a lot lower than Route seventy-four. I would suggest planting evergreens in the area between the site and the Georgia Power easement in lieu of the deciduous trees on that slope area that's being graded.
Particularly the willow oaks, maybe. Red maples don't get super tall, but those willow oaks do. So maybe we can do a little switcheroo.
Yeah, I'd like to see some more evergreens in that stretch of the frontage.
So work, so work with staff to reposition some of the trees, flowering trees maybe and evergreens.
So that there are more evergreens in that front buffer.
Right.
Okay. Yeah, I think overall it looks good. I do agree, there's an opportunity to go ahead and add a little more buffering in that, in that area with some evergreen that look, look good up out. Okay. Anything else, any other questions, comments? No? Okay, so like a, your motion?
I'll move to approve, what's this, I didn't recall. The landscape plan for Moon Valley Nursery at fourteen oh one Moba Drive with the condition that the applicant work with staff to provide, switch around some of the trees and provide more evergreens at the street side, Highway seventy-four side of the property.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
Any questions, comments on the motion? All those in favor of approval of the landscaping plan, Moon Valley Nursery, fourteen oh one Moba Drive, with conditions, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Landscape plan is approved with conditions. Thank you. Okay, building elevations, Primrose School, one-ten Wilshire Village Drive.
Okay.
Good evening, my name is David Wallace. I'm with Primrose Schools Corporate, I'm representing the franchisee. Hopefully can answer the questions on the elevations on the building.
All right, well, we'll present it here, and maybe they won't have any questions for you. All right, so this should be quite familiar to you since we just, you just approved the conceptual plan a short time ago, about a month. So this is located at one-ten Wilshire Village Drive. We're at the south end of town, right here, in the yellow box, just behind the, the one-twelve, which is the West Georgia Dermatology and the, the fairly new convenience store there. Rockaway Boulevard, I'm sorry, Rockaway Road here, Highway seventy-four. The lot is part of the Stevens Tract. The lot is part of the Stevens Tract, which you may or may not be familiar with, that includes the summer be, well, used to include the summer be property. And it's zoned G C with conditions. The, switch to some pretty pictures. So, the architectural design has, has sort of a modern cottage look, I'm calling it. It has some natural stone, bricks, some warm neutral colors, and some metal accents. The, the primary materials are brick and stone on all four sides, you can see here, which meets one of the zoning conditions of that G C with conditions, to have the brick and stone on all four sides. The stacked stone creates a wainscote base to the building. Then, the rest of the building is a brick veneer, which is separated, the middle section and the top section is separated by a soldier course of brick, sort of defining, excuse me, defining the middle and top portions. Nice thing about the brick is that, and the stone, is that they both have these color variations, which adds a lot of interest to the facade. Then, there's this tower portion of the building, here, 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 and here, that has a gabled roof to it, metal roof, that has a cupola and a little weather vane on top. This accent material, this metal, is carried over here to the, into canopies or awnings that are above the windows and doors on all four sides. Sort of a unifying, so unifying element there in material, which breaks up the, also breaks up the long facade, the windows and doors and the, and the canopies. Let's see. Let's talk about colors. Forgive me, I did not put this in on an angle. That is, that is, that is how it was given to us. Anyway, so, one of the zoning, another zoning condition of the, the G C with conditions district is that, that buildings should, shall comply with the guidelines that are established for the Wilshire Pavilion Development. And I will note that it is not easy to read here, but there is a statement on here that says, "Materials may be used at the architect's discretion." In your packet, it lists, I won't go into these in too much detail now, but in your packet, it does list the specific materials listed for the proposed, proposed building, which are all up here as well. And also, the materials in the Wilshire, I mean, sorry, the colors in the Wilshire Pavilion color palette. So, what I'm going to do is talk about the colors for the proposed building and how they relate to the Wilshire Pavilion palette. So, the brick that's proposed brings out, or sort of draws upon, the parchment color, which is this one here, parchment, and also the anodized aluminum. So, it has sort of this light, very light tan color and grays in, in the brick colors here. The stacked stone draws on sort of the vanilla a little bit and parchment and some grays. It's got some darker grays. And these stones, you can see here, there's even a little bit of, some dark red colors that's sort of pulling from the palette, a little, or maybe a little more of the, kind of dark red, sort of almost chocolate, pulling out of these colors from the palette here. And then, the board and bat and siding is going to match, paint, be painted to match this star bright color of this evis from the palette. And all, all things painted, like, let's see, some of the, there's some shutters here and some of the, some other accent, I'm sorry, not accent, some other pieces on the building. Everything will be painted to match this color right here. And then, the awnings, I'm sorry, the roof and the awnings will, are proposed to be charcoal gray, which coordinates with the surrounding buildings. There's an iron ore color on the surrounding buildings, which will provide a cohesive visual relationship to those surrounding buildings. So, I just wanted to, as a reminder, give you some reminders about the land development ordinance that we have, has some general goals for design, and some of those are, buildings within a development should complement one another. Design and materials should blend with the natural surroundings. Predominant colors should be neutral or earth tones, and accent colors may be used as unifying elements. And also, high-quality design is encouraged. Staff feels that these architectural, that the architectural design is meeting these goals, and therefore, we, staff feels that the building elevations are meeting the city's ordinances and the intent of the Wilshire Pavilion design guidelines, and we recommend approval.
Thank you. Okay. Going to go ahead and open it up for any questions? Commissioner Liotta?
It's a great-looking building.
Thank you.
It's, it's a beautiful design, and it's going to look great back there.
Thank you very much.
That's my general comment about the elevations. The only question I had is, you have some screening shown on the rooftop. I'm assuming it's around the HVAC units and whatnot?
Yes, sir.
It says that it's only going to be on three sides, and I would suggest that maybe it should be on all four sides with possibly an access door, as opposed to just a screening on three sides.
Okay, I can make sure that that happens. We do get captive air units, and the air conditioning units are pretty much in the middle of the building.
Right.
So, they're pretty, pretty well-hidden, but yeah, they'll be screened. The, the screening would typically come from the manufacturer of the air conditioning unit.
Okay, good. And I guess the only other question is, I'm looking, I'm comparing elevation east with elevation west, and maybe it's just got left off, then maybe a, a screening unit not shown on the west elevation? Looks like maybe it should be there?
Yeah, I can make sure that that's, it might have been something.
I'm sure it was just an oversight, but I was trying to understand whether it was behind the other structure or where exactly it was.
No, I can verify that.
Okay.
We had two different architects working on this. We had the architect that's building, doing it, and we had internal people doing, trying to make sure this works.
Okay. Those are my only comments, Mr. Chairman. I, I like the building. It's, I think it's a beautiful design.
Thank you. Commissioner Chris?
Okay, I mean, I agree. I think the building is quite pretty. I just have a question for staff. I know that over, over the years, we've, we've talked about how the, the building design has to have, you know, about three different parts, the bottom, middle, and the top. Is that, is that a requirement for this as well?
Those are general requirements for all commercial and industrial on major thoroughfares. Yes, sir.
Yeah, is it, the, the only thing that I think, if I had to be critical of any piece of this, which I, I really like all of it, is that you can't really see the, the difference between the middle and the top. I think it would be nice if, at least in my opinion, if it was a little bit different of a color to add some contrast, that line. But other than that, I think it looks great. And if the other commissioners don't agree with, with that comment, then I'm happy with it as it is.
Commissioner Johnson?
So, I really think the colors work well together. I love the brick, the mixture of bricks, stone, metal, just to have, create contrast. So, I think, I think it really, it really looks good.
Thank you. Commissioner Reeves?
I agree. It's a very nice-looking building, very nice-looking building. And it's, based on what we have here, it blends very well with the existing buildings. I like it.
Thank you. And that was one of the things I was going to say, you know, we always kind of look at, you know, is it in the same style and character of, of the surrounding buildings? And style and character not meaning that it's a cookie cutter and it looks exactly like them, but does it carry over those elements of the other ones? And in looking at this, yes, it does. It's pulling different parts of, of some of the other buildings into it. It has definitely some, some variation, of, of course. And what I like is, is, I had kind of thought originally it was going to be more of a, a stark white instead of where the more of, I would say, a cream, that kind of color, the, the, I guess it's a star bright. And I think that makes a big difference. It really gives it that warm feel, kind of almost a, you know, it's a cottage look, but it's, to me, it's even more like country type, type of look, almost like a, a stable or, or farm or something like that. And like I said, it really pulls in a lot of warmth, and I like the color scheme of, of all the different materials, so I think it looks really good. Thank you. Thank you. I am going to go back and, and do we want to touch on, does anyone have any other, I guess, questions or comments related to the differentiation in the upper level of, do we want to see anything different? Do we want to, or we pretty much good, or?
So, my only recommendation is that we don't do or require a different color, because then I'm afraid it'll look like a racing stripe.
That's, that was my, my concern, Commissioner, when you brought that up.
But what you could do is have it set out a little bit, so there's some dimension, dimension to it, and then it creates a little play of shadow.
Just set out that soldier course a little bit further out?
Great suggestion.
That can be done.
Yeah.
Cool. So, then there would be two conditions, is to set out that soldier course and then the screening on all four sides for the AC units on top.
Yeah. Does that sound good?
That sounds like a great plan, because if, if, if there's, if we require the three different looks, I think there should be some consideration to do it now. So, I like that recommendation as well.
Yeah. I think that'll work. Thank you, staff. Okay. So, that being said, any other comments or questions? No? Okay. Like a motion to approve with the two conditions?
Keep your streak.
He already stated it.
Hold on, what's this one, what's this one called?
It is 110 Wilshire Village Drive.
A move to approve the, what?
Building elevations.
Building elevations at 110 Wilshire Village Drive with the conditions that there is screening on all four sides for the AC units on the top of the building, and the soldier course be, um...
Soldier course to be brought.
Yeah, brought forward slightly to create a little bit of shadow.
Okay. Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. A motion for approval with conditions and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Great. Approved with the two conditions. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Do you need those elevations changed, shown the way you just mentioned it, or?
So, what we'll do is, we will send you the approval letter, and when you submit the actual building plans, we can, we compare it, so you don't need to revise those. But you will, I mean, obviously, any elevations in the plans will need to reflect that. Yes, sir.
No, no problem. Thank you. So, right now, we're, we're again not showing a meeting for, for May 13th, and we will look at possibly having a special call.
That's right.
Meeting at some point before...
By, you will hear from us by May 6th.
Okay. Good. Okay. And if that's it, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved. Second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.